Are we live? Good evening, welcome to the Monday, November 24th, 2025 Board of Supervisors meeting. This meeting is now called to order. Ms. Witten will conduct roll call of the board.
Supervisor Lewis.
Present.
Supervisor Day.
Here in on time.
Supervisor McDaniel.
Here.
Supervisor Lyons.
Here.
Chair Ayers.
Here. We will now offer an invocation followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. If you would like to join us, please stand.
Heavenly Father, we come to you tonight in the season of Thanksgiving. We want to express our thank you to our community, our first responders, our teachers, our county staff, our natural history and beautiful scenery that we all enjoy every day. Most importantly, our people, our people of this county that entrust us to do what's right and to make decisions on their behalf. Pray for safety for everyone traveling during this time, and we hope that they're able to spend time with their family and friends. Amen. A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible, that redeems justice for all.
Are there any changes to the agenda?
No ma'am.
We will hold citizen comments both in person and remotely. There are two options for citizens to offer comment. To join by telephone, you may dial into one of the numbers listed on the county website. Webinar ID and password are there for your convenience. Citizens wishing to simply view the meeting live or after the fact can do so on the Rockbridge County Board of Supervisors YouTube channel, also available on the county website. If you wish to make a citizen comment as a Zoom meeting participant, you will use the raise your hand feature. You can press the raise hand button on the bottom of your Zoom window or press star nine if you're calling in by telephone. We will now welcome citizen comments. When your name is called, please address the board at the podium stating your first and last name and magisterial district. Please limit your comments to no more than three minutes. There is a timer on the table for your convenience. Is there anyone signed up?
No ma'am.
Hey, anyone online?
No ma'am.
Is there anyone in the audience? We'll move on to the approval of the October 30th, 2025 interjurisdictional meeting minutes and November 10th, 2025 regular meeting minutes. Are there any questions or comments on the minutes? We will approve those together. Is there a motion?
So move.
Mr. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Lyons?
Yes.
Mr. Day?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
I.
And I vote yes. School appropriation resolution, Mr. Harrison.
Uh, yes, before you, there's a resolution authorizing the appropriation of $656,766 for the Rockbridge County High School ball field lights. Uh, as a reminder, the board approved that transfer at their October 14th, uh, 2025 meeting. And as mentioned at that meeting, is is a two-step uh process with the board approving a transfer and then the school board having to and board doing appropriation a second time.
Thank you.
Move to approve second.
Mr. Lyons?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Day?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
I.
And I vote yes. County financial report and appropriation resolution, Mr. Harrison.
Uh, yes, before you, uh, is a resolution authorizing the payment of bills and additional appropriations. Additional appropriations include, uh, call through for the sheriff's office, 10,000 from a auto insurance claim, $56,139 in federal grants and $12,795 for, and state grants. Uh, the sheriff's office, uh, they've just had one another grant without any cash match pop up in my email about 20 minutes ago. Uh, they're really knocking it out of the park uh with the grants. I just want to make that comment.
Mr. Harrison, you.
Oh, sorry. I just wanted to make that comment that they're doing a really good job, uh, that, uh, the sheriff's office, I get in grants and getting grants without local match funds. They're, they're really doing a really great job. As of October 31st, uh, federal revenues total 18,427,695 dollars. Expenditures total 23,494,740 dollars. About on track, uh, year-to-date difference is negative 5,67,045 dollars. Um, and as a reminder, most our big check comes in December after the first half of property tax. Uh, 33% of the fiscal year has passed. Uh, we're right on track on the other taxes, sales taxes that I'm just going to round up. That's okay, 1.7 million or 36% of the estimated budget. Mills taxes at a little over a million dollars or 32% of the estimated budget. Lodging tax is 624,000 or 34% of the estimated budget. So I think that was a really good finance committee did a really good job, uh, coming to a compromise between optimists and pessimists. Looks like it's working out really good. Uh, admissions taxes at 182,920 or 52% of estimated budget and cigarettes taxes are at 30% of estimated budget or 67,500. Um, and of course, we'll be working with the commissioner revenue on um figuring out Goshen share of the lodging tax from the train. Uh, finance, IT and school division staff continue to work on the Tyler software. It's, it's, it's tough, um, but, uh, we're still progressing forward and the FI 25 audit is underway. Uh, there might be, or there will be a slight delay, not just with Rockbridge, but other localities as well due to the government shutdown. Which caused the updates to the audit reporting requirements to not be released until after the shutdown. So I put the auditors behind, but, um, otherwise, uh, things are going well so far.
That it?
I guess, ma'am.
Thank you. Are there any questions for Mr. Harrison? Or motion?
Move to approve the resolution.
In a second. Mr. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Hi.
Mr. Lyons?
Yes.
Mr. Day?
Yes.
And I vote yes.
Chair, one thing that Mr. Harrison neglected to speak about, uh, is that county received certificate of achievement for excellence in financial reporting once again. And I'd like to thank him and his department for, uh, their efforts in doing so for our county.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Harrison. Update from the, from Rockbridge Recovery, Mr. Suter.
Well, first of all, uh, I don't know what I've done to the view, but I'm not going to mess with anything because I don't want to screw this up. So for right now, but, uh, I'd like to recognize Jerry Schaaf. As you, as you may recall, the board, uh, along with Lexington and Buta Vista City Councils has supported two regional efforts uh, with opioid, opioid abatement funds, Rockbridge Recovery and the Rockbridge Recovery Court. Uh, the Community Foundation, uh, for Rockbridge Bath and Allegheny has played a prominent role in helping establish Rockbridge Recovery. It's a 501(c)(3) organization established to assist adults suffering from addiction. Um, central component of Rockbridge Recovery is the Hope House located in Buta Vista. And, uh, Jerry Schaaf, uh, who was with us so many years, uh, came out of retirement to, to help him along. And she's the chair of Rockbridge Recovery's Board of Directors. And, uh, she asked to provide the board with an update and, uh, uh, Community Foundation Executive Director Lori Turner was, was going to try to be with us tonight, but she's predisposed. Uh, but Jerry is going to give you all a PowerPoint presentation, assuming I can load it.
Good news is I'm not here to ask for anything. I just wanted to give you everyone an update on what's been happening at Rockbridge Recovery because we have had an amazing year. So.
Got a clicker?
Excellent.
Next, right there, yeah.
All right.
Okay, just an overview of, just an overview of our services, and I'm going to go through them very quickly. This could be five minutes. Um, but we do offer Hope House support groups, one-on-one peer support, harm reduction referrals, 24/7 hot, uh, warm line, our jail services and our brand new soon-to-be-open women's house. So, please. We're probably best known for Hope House, which is a recovery residence for men. We house up to six men in a six-month program. It gives them a safe and secure and supportive environment to strengthen their recovery and, um, prepare to move back into the community. To date, we've had 15 residents. There are four in residence right now. Two of those are participants in the Maury River Recovery Court. We've had eight graduates and three who did not graduate, and they were placed in, um, programs that were a better fit. They all needed more, um, more services and more clinical services than we provide. So next we have our support groups. We do support groups in the evening. They are for people who are in recovery. They are for people who may not be in recovery yet, but want to talk about their addiction. And for family and friends of those who are or have been in addiction. This is a tough thing when you've got, when you're raising your grandbabies because their parents are incarcerated or because their parents are addicted. So we have, uh, four meetings a week in the evening and, um, participation goes up and down depending on the season, depending on, I mean, we love it when people don't need the support group anymore and move on to something else. And then it takes a little while until another kind of group comes in. One other support group, which is not really a support group, um, is our Smart Recovery for Teens. And this is for at-risk teens who are starting to show addictive types of behavior. That could be addicted to social media, to vaping, to all kinds of things. And, uh, we've had real good success in real small groups on Saturday mornings, uh, with these, these teens who are primarily coming from the county high school. And then we have one-on-one peer support. This is our building that we are moving into. It's right next door to Hope House. Um, we are in the process of doing a whole bunch of renovation, but we can provide peer support specialists, peer recovery specialists to do one-on-one conversations with anyone who wants to have those conversations. We prefer and they prefer that it be by appointment, but drop-ins are always welcome. Um, maybe the first meeting on a dropout, uh, with a drop-in is let's see where you're at and what you need, and then let's get some more scheduled. But, uh, we have one-on-ones happening probably 20 times a week between our peer recovery specialists. After that, we have harm reduction, and this is a big thing for us. Uh, we offer revive training, which offers a way to save someone's life if they have overdosed, and it includes free Narcan. All of our trainings are free, all of our harm reduction is free. Um, we will start in early 2026 to do HIV and hepatitis B insta-testing, which is a finger prick and then a referral if there's a positive result. Uh, we've got all of the pieces in place. We're just waiting on a contract for supplies with the Virginia Department of Health, and everything got pushed back because of the government shutdown. Um, we also offer free harm reduction kits, and they include condoms and test strips for majority of the easily available and very dangerous street drugs. Some information on, um, sexual safety and on safety when using drugs for people who have not yet gotten to that point of not using. We distributed 400 of those kits this year at various, um, locations at health fairs and such, but also right out of our offices. Referral. We assist and our peers assist with all kinds of things. It could be applying for benefits. It could be figuring out transportation, uh, making housing applications, doing resume building and how to search for a job and, uh, mock interviews. Um, and very importantly, obtaining services from other local agencies. As you all know, Rockbridge is too small and the money is too tight for anybody to be duplicating anybody else's services. So we don't do that. We have a 24/7 warm line because we have peer recovery specialists in Hope House, 24/7, 365. Anyone who feels like they need somebody to talk to can call our line, get option four after office hours, and a peer will talk to them for as long as they want. They are also trained to, um, notify crisis intervention team if it looks like this is a dangerous situation. But often it's middle of the night, I don't know what I'm going to do. And it could be someone who is in addiction, someone who's recovering from addiction and feeling a little uneasy or a family member. Our jail services. At the Rockbridge County Jail, we have two peer recovery specialists who are specially certified because they have lived experience with incarceration. And they are going into the jail once a week and doing both group counseling, group support and one-on-one support. Um, they will also work with inmates who express an interest in going into a 28-day inpatient program upon their release. They will help them find a placement, make sure that they can get their jail Medicaid transferred to regular Medicaid so that it gets paid for and it doesn't cost $10,000 upfront. Um, and we will take them to the inpatient facility on release after we step at Walmart and buy supplies. And our thing we're most excited about is our women's house. There is not a state-certified recovery residence for women in the 540 area code. We know of people, we have talked to people who went into a inpatient treatment program as part of their sentence in the jail or in prison. And when they were done with the, the inpatient part, they were given the choice. You can go to a recovery residence or you can go back to incarceration to serve out the rest of your sentence. Most of them go back to jail because they don't want to be as far away as the recovery res, the closest recovery residence is to the valley. So, um, we're very excited. We are going to be housing up to four women. We will follow the exact same program that the Hope House for Men follows. Six-month program, learning life skills, um, strengthening recovery. We will also, um, be, we are renting the building right now. Uh, it is right behind where our offices are, and we will be seeking grants to buy the building uh, from churches, foundations, corporations and individuals. Um, we hope to have the first women in residence sometime in the first two months of 2026. Once we have two in residence, then we can get the women's house certified by the Virginia Association of Recovery Residences. This community has come through again in terms of its generosity. Um, our building's owner is covering all the cost of all the materials for all the renovations. Uh, the mission next door built the new ramp and porch. Uh, we have several churches who are covering operating costs for the first year. We have, um, some donors from the Community Foundation who said, whatever it costs to furnish that women's house, and that's furniture and furnishings and appliances and sheets and towels and all of that stuff. I'll cover it. So we have a really good feeling about the need for a women's house. And I just want to let you all know that that's the next thing coming down our road. I'm done. So I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Ms. Schaaf, I just want to say thank you so much for everything you do for our community and have done for years and years and years. You are an inspiration, you really are.
Been here since the earth was cooling these years.
I can. Anything down?
Thank you for a great update.
Thank you. Have a good evening.
Consideration of Glasgow Volunteer Fire Department Bay Corp. Member Agreement, Mr. Ramsey, Chief Ramsey.
Chair, members of the board, uh, thank you for your time. Uh, this evening we bring to you, uh, Mr. Harrison and I, uh, have been working on this for the past couple of weeks. Uh, it was found during a recent, uh, Bay Corp. Audit that, uh, due to the fact that we provide volunteer departments uh, with a stipend, uh, the more commonly known as the paper call program that we've been doing now for, um, four to five years, something like that, that the volunteers have since, since we, the local government, provide, uh, fee for service. We have to ensure that they have a workers' comp policy. There's state code, uh, language there that, um, that permits that. So with that, we, um, Mr. Harrison reached out, um, to our office and we pulled all the volunteer agencies and we, we had, uh, all but one, uh, that had a, an accident policy in place by their current premiums or, or current policies. In-house, uh, one did not, uh, which was the Glasgow Volunteer Fire Department, uh, and, and due to the fact that they don't, uh, have such policy on the volunteers, were mandated to provide that. Um, so working with, uh, Bay Corp., um, Ms. Kathleen Guzzi, who's the one that's been our representative for a while, um, we have a really good, uh, plan. Um, they'll, they'll be entered in, uh, given the approval, they'll be entered into, uh, a self-risk, uh, pool through Bay Corp. for volunteers. Uh, to us, the cost is $1,725 annually. That's just on the active members of Glasgow Fire Department. Um, and, and the requests from us tonight is in the information packet provided to us by Bay Corp. Uh, there has to be a resolution approved, uh, by the board that would allow, um, the, the fire rescue chief to, um, execute agreements and make, make decisions based on, uh, the volunteers' behalf when it comes to the workers' comp claim. And how we have set it up or plan to do this is that, uh, we keep it separate between workers' comp claims from the county employees. Um, as they go through our HR, we have a company nurse number that we would call any county employee that would call if there was an injury. Uh, and then it would go through the HR office, uh, on our behalf. What we, um, are planning to do with this is that the claims for volunteers would come through the fire rescue office. Our admin assistant, um, Bailey Trent, uh, would gather those claims. There's not a lot that we have to do other than document those and, and make sure that we, we keep those on, on file. When you call a company nurse line, they kind of triage via the telephone and then recommend going to urgent care, emergency department, primary care physician, things like that. So, um, what we propose is to, uh, for you all to approve that. Again, we're mandated to do that, but also approve the resolution that allows, uh, fire rescue, namely the chief and the resolution, uh, make, make decisions, uh, based on, um, any, hopefully that would never happen, but workers' comp claims for, for the volunteers currently at the Glasgow Fire Department, but also looking forward, uh, if there's any other agencies that would want to come under this, umbrella self, self-pool for Bay Corp. that they would have the ability to do so, and then we would just manage their claims as well. It should, should there be any? Any questions on that?
Mr. Harrison, did I cover?
Oh, you did great.
Thank you.
You did great. Uh, did you say the cost was $1,700?
$1,700 annually, yes.
And that's just for Glasgow?
That is just for Glasgow.
And that would come from fire rescue budget or is that Glasgow?
Currently, it's going to come out of the fire rescue budget. Um, we've already got the invoice for, um, as part of the, the kickoff from there. So we would just have to budget that moving forward.
Are, are we, are we contributing similar amounts to the other departments in the county or are they paying their own or?
Currently, they're paying their own. However, uh, their requests, this is kind of fresh, uh, fresh news from the association meeting, uh, this, this, uh, last week is that part of the budget process for this year, uh, is that we would look at to, look into providing coverage, insurance coverage for the volunteers. This one of this thing, this item kind of, um, come up as a topic for, for the, the county to, to take care of completely as a whole. Uh, so we will be looking into that for, for future. Um, but currently this is something that's just came up within the last, uh, month or two. And, and we're, we're just covering the cost at this point.
Has Glasgow never covered, never?
They have insurance coverage on facilities, vehicles, things like that, but just not, not.
But never, they've never had a.
Not an accident policy. Uh, one of the things that's a requirement as a Virginia EMS agency is, is such policy. So that's one of the reasons why all of our agencies have, have been covered in the past. And, you know, we only have two that are not EMS licensed, that of Glasgow and Goshen Fire Department. So, um, that's kind of how we got to where, where we are.
Well, I mean, we're kind of have to tonight, but I would think if we do, we should make the offer to all the agencies.
And, and we have. So when we, we talked to that, uh, not an official approval offer, we did, we did say this would be something that should, the, the workers' comp policies actually seems to be a pretty good, pretty good deal, um, for the volunteer. But, uh, so far, no, none other has, has stepped up and asked, asked for that, but.
Well, they might now that they know they wouldn't have to pay for it.
For sure, yeah. And moving forward, one of the things we're looking at is the complete insurance, facilities, maintenance, because I'm sure there's a considerable cost savings.
Right, that's what I'm saying. If you get one big group to cover everyone, it might be more efficient.
I just, only my thought is I agree with Dr. Lyons down those lines. We just want to remain as flexible as possible to get the, the best result. If, if, if a department has a package policy or something which this is included that may give the, that department a better rate, then we certainly don't want to, to affect that.
For sure.
Any other discussion?
I make motion to approve.
Mr. McDaniel?
I'll second.
Mr. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Day?
Yes.
Mr. Lyons?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Hi.
And I vote yes.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, I want to address the camera here a second. I'm sorry, that's so distracting. Uh, we've got some kind of gremlin in there. I've been texting IT, but I think we're just going to have to roll with what we got until, uh, till after the meeting and we'll get it fixed. But apparently there's a setting that flipped out in the, in the camera ratio.
Consideration of professional services agreement for open and engineering services, Mr. Harrison.
Uh, yes, um, before you is, um, uh, nine proposals, uh, for open-ended engineering services. Uh, a committee, um, was formed to, uh, look over the proposals. We had received 14 in total. Um, the, uh, companies that were, uh, selected, uh, was Hurt and Profit, Perkins and Orson, Timmons Group, Romo, Klepper and Call, Thompson and Litten, McGill Associates, Spectrum Design, TRC Engineers and Trans Systems Corporation. Um, the, uh, Amy did a, a good job, uh, keeping us on track. Um, and helping us, uh, use those and rank those. All the agreements have been. All the agreements have been reviewed, drafted and reviewed by the county attorney. And any questions?
Well, the engineering also includes survey, so which tends to actually be used quite a bit.
Gentlemen? Any questions?
I hope we approved the services agreement as presented.
Mr. Lewis?
Hi.
Mr. Day?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Lyon?
Yes.
And I vote yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Consideration of Board Bylaws, Mr. Dryden.
Earlier in this year, we brought before the boards and draft bylaws. And it's been several months, but we've gone through several revisions of the draft that we had presented to you earlier. It's been reviewed both internally, including by the county minister who serves as clerk for the board. The purposes in these bylaws, up to now, the board supervisor has not had bylaws. It's considered to be best practices for governing bodies to have bylaws. And bylaws give a certain amount of flexibility. You have statutory obligations, which we have followed no matter what. The bylaws are the rules that the board sets upon itself to govern its functions. Main things we're trying to, goals we're trying to accomplish by presenting these bylaws is enhanced efficiency, transparency, and accountability, consistence in governance, legal compliance, and public engagement. What we'd hopefully do by, if assuming the board would like to move ahead with adopting bylaws, it would not only improve the function of the board, but also improve transparency. So the public would understand how the board functions in ways so the bylaws would be published on our website. We have before you the bylaws. There have been, I've read through it several times and I get read through it again today. And as I read through it again today, there's a few changes I would like to present to you for adoption. And I'll just go through those really quick. None of them are substantive. On page one in the preamble, we, in the last sentence, the second-to-last sentence here moved that saying that the rules of governing your conducts, which are are, will cover the costs and the means of the board. And if they're not inconsistent with the bylaws and any special rules, well, given this was a document result as a merger of bylaws and rules of procedure. So we didn't, bylaws, having the word bylaws is redundant there. So I just removed that. On C, on Article 1C, there just wasn't, I forgot to put a colon there for parliamentarian. So that was the only change there. And if we move back towards the very, towards getting close to the end, in Article 4, what we've done with these bylaws, as you're aware, we had to adopt an electronic meetings policy. And so we put the electronic meeting policy actually in the bylaws. But that required some changes in just some of the references we had to the section. So if you look in Article 4, 1E, the wording for reference back to sections was changed to, so it's consistent with the way it's drafted here in the bylaws. There's no substantive change to it. And then the final one is on Article 12. In Article 12, if you look at the end of Article 12, the board comments section for letter B, I removed one section in there, which I'm not quite sure why I included in the first place. It says, "Members may respond to comments." And I removed the clause that says, "Or may not respond to comments and presentations by other members during the board comment time." I figure there's really no need to have that word line in there. Otherwise, everything's the same as the documents provided to you beforehand. There would be, the board would need to decide. There's in Article 1, there's a question for option 1 and option 2 as to what the chair's function can be for making motions and seconding motions that are brought before the board of supervisors. The board supervisors, you're small enough that you do fall under the Roberts Rules Board's small committee, small board section. And in those sections, it's the chair of small committees or small boards are allowed to second or make motions. However, our current practice is for the chair to pass the gavel to the vice chair if the chair would like to make a motion or second a motion. And either one of those are fine. So this is just put as an option out for the board. How would you like to function? We have the feedback I've received from some supervisors that they'd like to stick with option 1. So, but, but it was just put out so the board can make that decision is how you'd like to function. And then the other thing, which is a little bit different, if you look towards the very back, we did include a decorum section and a confidentiality section. And that will be in Article 11 and Article, it's our Article 10, 10, and Article, well, there's a, Article 10, Article 11. So the decorum, okay, one other change there says Article 11 says X1. It should just be X under core. So I'm glad we're catching. So Article 10 decorum just talks about what is the proper action. This is for actual board members themselves, supervisors themselves, which gives, and this is allowed by state statute. And so, and this, we have not adopted these rules, which are in the statute before. So I thought it would be in the best interest to give you the opportunity to adopt them. And that's just to ensure that the individual supervisors have a certain level of decorum in their activities and allows the board to police its own members. And then confidentiality and privileges of an Article 11 is, as you're aware, there has been some counties in this general area have had some issues where members have released confidential information. And so we thought it would be, well, it's understood, I believe, but it may be good to have written in bylaws that confidential information should remain confidential unless the board itself determines to release that information. So, and I'm happy to answer any questions or see if there's any further guidance or direction. If not, if you're happy to move forward with this, I thought it was best that we pass this by resolution, given the seriousness of bylaws. So where is a draft resolution prepared, if you would like to move ahead with it?
So we do formally need to adopt option 1 or adoption 2. We need to make that decision. Does anybody have any objection to sticking with what we have currently, option 1? If there's none, fine. And then there were five, the five little changes?
Yeah, that's right. And so if you, and since those were presented to you, except for now, of course, adding Article 10 should not be Article 11, should be Article 10. But with those in place, the proper motion would be to adopt the, to go ahead and adopt the resolution that the language of resolution would encompass these changes.
Great. Gentlemen, do you have any questions?
You did make, I guess, make reference to it is Article 10 that decorum falls under?
Yes.
Because in the copy I have it as.
Yeah, I know. That was one of the changes. We just made a line through right there. So that's Article 10 is decorum and Article 11 is the confidentiality. Most of the other stuff here is already what the board functions under anyway. And we did, as I mentioned, we did include the electronic meeting policy in here. And we also include the, that voting, the board's voting policy, which we adopted earlier this year, which means that this, by adopting this on an annual basis, then you won't have to separately talk to the electronic means policy, which, as you know, we're required to annually now.
Madam Chair, I'll make a motion to approve the resolution with stated changes. That's tonight's meeting.
Thank you. Do I have a second? I'll second. Mr. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Day?
Yes.
Mr. Lyon?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Hi.
And I vote yes.
And we will make sure that those changes are made and the updated copies are provided to the member supervisors and also posted on the website.
Thank you. Move on to appointments. TCO to fill unexpired term for Jason Harris. Jason Harris resigned from the TCO. Since then, the board has received two applications. These applications are from Steve Shank and Travis Coffey. Is there a motion in a second to appoint one of the applications to fill the unexpired?
I'll move that we approve Travis Coffey.
Okay.
Second.
Mr. McDaniel, I mean, excuse me, Mr. Lyons?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Day?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Hi.
And I vote yes. Move on to the R A C S B, Ann Ashby McKissick, term expires 12/31/2025. And she's unable to continue serving. And we have a application from Virginia Cameron. There are motion to appoint Virginia Cameron to the Rockbridge Area Community Services Board.
The move.
Was that Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Your second?
Second.
Mr. Lewis?
Hi.
Mr. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Lyons?
Yes.
Mr. Day?
Yes.
And I vote yes. This is our last board meeting before Thanksgiving. So I just want to wish all of you, everyone, a happy and safe Thanksgiving. If there are no additional comments or reports from any of your committees, is there a motion to adjourn?
So move.
I'll second it.
Mr. Lyons?
Yes.
Mr. Day?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis? And I vote yes. Thank you.